Actually, yesterday, from Lebanon, one leader of Lebanon, Boris Legren, and some Lebanon residents, I'm assuming, with faces I don't recognize. So, if ever, just please stand and join me for the pleasure of being inside the chair.
To the flag in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Mr. Chergin, how are you?
I'm going to ask everybody that speaks to please stand up and state your name clearly, and if you're from Lebanon, please state so, just for the record, so you can always have a good showing. First up, we have on the agenda is, well, welcome, the Lebanon board and the Lebanon residents, so welcome. And we also have birthdays, which we usually do for first meeting. We didn't get them from time for that second day. These are birthdays are celebrated in the month of January. On January, we have Kyler Kajus from Five Department, Caitlin Kajus from the Five Department, Cole Clark from the Five Department, Augustus Holland from Library, Mike Bolio, Boris Legren, Randy Netto from the Five Department, and Sean Merritt for the Five Department. I'd like to wish these individuals a happy birthday and thank them for their service to the town of Milton and townspeople of Milton. Next up, we get into the meeting with the board of the Lebanon Boris Legren. And I guess a couple of topics are on the agenda tonight for that. One is discussion of the bridge between Lebanon and Milton, and where we are with it. I mean, last I knew, New Hampshire Bridge of New Hampshire Mago is, is in the queue for 2021. And so, it's still a little ways out there. We have, in our bridge front, approximately $141,000,000. And, you know, as you know, the town of Milton is responsible for 20% of half the cost. The state of New Hampshire picks up the 80% of half the cost. The state of Maine, if I'm correct, picks up the other 50% of the cost of the bridge. So, I mean, anytime you have anything you want to inject us, please speak up. Yes?
So, we just recently heard that we've been moved, I'm sorry, Deb Wilson from Lebanon. We just recently heard that the state has moved us up onto the work schedule for 2018, 2019, so sooner than stated originally.
Heard that from Maine?
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay, because, all right, I'll verify that with New Hampshire, I mean, not that we don't believe.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying.
The states need to talk.
Yeah.
Sometimes that's easier said than done.
And not that it's important, I mean, if it could be moved up, that, I mean, it'd be awesome, because, you know, with that bridge being closed, there's numerous factors in, you know, safety, safety's huge, because you've got to go all the way around now. You have the traffic was increased on all the back roads to get, to avoid that one bridge. Did I not mention there's a business rate there as well?
Ms. Brown?
That Larry Brown, Milton, a longstanding complaint of no effect, going back to when the bridge right here was built. And I hope that they would have made arrangements for pedestrians to walk across the bridge, not in traffic lane. If anybody wants to walk across from Lebanon out into New Hampshire and get back alive, you might want to ask your own state if they would consider a pedestrian walkway on any bridge done.
Yeah, I know the old wooden one did have a pedestrian walkway on the side. Of course, it was, it was easy enough to jump it by vehicle, but, because they had a...
Unless my complaint is not whining enough, all they have to do is put bolts in the structure of the present bridge, and when they had money and interest, they had to bolt it a pedestrian walkway in.
Yeah, on the side, yeah. Yes?
Yeah, Larry's Comet makes me think that a bike lane...
Name, name?
Virginia from Milton. Larry's Comet makes me think that a bike lane would be appreciated on this bridge. It used to be a common bike route, but I would ride across and up and around, and that would be very least. Having it there would then be a step towards getting more bike lanes in Milton.
Yeah. Thanks, Virginia. Thank you. Anyone else comments about the bridge? Anything from the town of Lebanon about the bridge?
Christine Paul, from Lebanon. I think it really is a huge safety issue for you guys as well as us, probably more so for us, because you would be first responders for us closer than we would be in most cases over there. So, I mean, if we could push and push, then I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, because there definitely is a safety factor on both sides.
Absolutely.
Because we have the trail, you know, the trail practice on that, and if something happens on the road, they're cut off. So, yeah, this is the safety factor. Ms. Paul?
Bob Meyer, from New Hampshire. The only comment that I have is I do worry about ongoing, no matter what bridge gets put in, is the issue of kids jumping over, off the bridge. And I prefer not, from a visual standpoint, not seeing a chain link fence tend to be high on either side, and it would be more appropriate, I think, to actually consider a covered bridge. You could take a, it's more expensive, I understand that, but that's, if kids jumping off that, that's got dangers.
Do you have all the bridges between London and...
But if they, if they can't do it on, off a covered bridge with walls, it's not...
Now, when it comes to the bridge, we are, I don't want to say totally limited, but kind of limited, what the state's going to do. I mean, the state's got a big say in it, so I understand that.
You only get so much for $1.4 million.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the bridge before we move on to the European NIAID? Not hearing any. Next topic, we have a discussion on the European NIAID, as we all know, and I did ask TPA members to show up today to kind of give us an overview of what they found, what their histories were at. And Norm's pulling out all the background information. This is a problem for both Lebanon and Milton. So, Norm will give you the floor.
I didn't know I was going to get it so soon.
But I catch you up, got him?
Yeah, he did.
So, it's good. Get over here, if I can address everybody.
I need to know the person, the member of the TPA. Also on the steering committee that was established to help put together a plan for 2016 and the following years. And then before the forest assortment in both towns, a couple of times, had three, two on the bones on. So, but for others who are here, let me just summarize by saying we found a lot of European NIAID. It's a destructive invasive aquatic plant. It grows very rapidly and can essentially take over a lake. It displaces other forms of other native plants. It can lay large dense mats on the bottom. It's an annual plant, it dies in the fall, and then in the winter, and then it regrows starting in, usually sometime, and we've seen last year, it started to grow in early What it can do is, I won't get into all the evils of it, but basically, it can take over a lake, render it over a long period of time effectively useless for boating, swimming, and fishing, and for recreational activities. So, this could, there's a potential for serious economic impact, loss of tourism dollars, loss of tax revenues to the towns from a reduction in the value of waterfront properties, which is a pretty, big source of revenue for the town of Milton, and also on due of Lebanon. I've given you guys some numbers before, and so you know what I'm talking about. So, we need to get it under control. I think it's controllable. Our experience this last year is that it is, is controllable, but it's costly, and it's not something that's going to take, not something you're going to get rid of in one year, it's going to require an effort every year for possibly several years, possibly generations, we don't really know. But the hope is that we can, if we attack it every year, we can keep it under control and reach a state of equilibrium, so to speak, where we have, we have no real increase in the growth from year to year to year, we just keep it under control. It doesn't, it doesn't become a problem, it is not a problem. Last year, the work that was done to, to control it was, was to use divers assisted with suction harvesting machinery to, to remove, to work in the large dense area of about 40 acres up on the north end of the Northeast Pond, on the Lebanon side of Northeast Pond, where is where the muddle load was. And the work was funded by both Maine DEP and New Hampshire DES. Both states have invasive aquatic species programs that help local activities coordinate activities to fight, to find and to fight invasive aquatic species. Today, we have here John McFederan, who's in charge of the program from Maine DEP, and Amy Smigula, who is the same for New Hampshire DES. They're the ones who hired, well, Maine DEP hired the contractor. They spent $30,000 with diver assisted harvesters, approximately, John, that was about right? About 20 was funded by the state of Maine, 10 was funded by New Hampshire, I understand. They attacked that large dense area, and the last report I got was they ended up at the end of the year getting less than 40% of that. Almost impossible to go and attack that amount, you know, with divers, you know, you've got a picture, there's your 40 acres of stuff growing, and you're going up and weeding your stuff, pulling it out by hand and sticking it into the end of a pipe that gets sucked up. They can't see after a while, you know, they move to another place, but they can only do it though so far, so. Herbicides is a way of going after large dense areas. There are some herbicides. Amy and John put together a paper that I just got this afternoon, I got it here.
Amy made copies, if you, if there, you want a distributor or you want me to?
Yeah. Why don't you do it, John? So, there's a paper there that talks about the herbicides that they plan to use. Now, the reason they didn't use it last year was in deference to an ordinance in the town of Milton that indicated that the spraying of aquatic, the spraying of herbicides could not take place unless it was approved by a town meeting vote. And at the end of this year, when that, the, that particular ordinance doesn't really apply, because we're not using a spraying application, being, as described in that paper, it's being introduced into the pond by, in a hose that's underwater, that's floating over the, over the target plants. And so, that, therefore, the selection in Lebanon have agreed that it's, that it would not be contrary to the intent or to the literal provisions of their ordinance to use the herbicides this year. And on that basis, you do plan to use it this year.
Ms. Herbis?
I believe. I'm John McFederan from the state of Maine, Department of Environmental Protection. In order to use an herbicide in a public water in the state, we need to apply for a notice of intent, which is essentially a permit under a general permit that, that we have. We have, so we need to go through that process and also for treatment in Maine, which requires sampling of the water and assessment of the plant growth before, and also sampling of the water for the herbicide concentration, to make sure you have the right concentration, and sampling after the treatment to make sure it's been effective and the herbicide dissipates. There are many other pieces of that in the puzzle. Plus, when we get out there this summer, if we don't see the growth of it, for whatever reason, that is as dense as necessitating herbicide, then we don't treat it with herbicide. So, it very much depends on what we see out there in the summer.
But you do plan to go forward with this, getting these permits and so forth, so that if we do find the growth that we anticipate, see, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be anything less this year, then, because I'm not a marine biologist...
We do plan to proceed with getting the permit to treat in Maine.
Question. Have you had any experience with this in the past, the herbicide, and if so, what's the success rate been, and have there been any, I want to say, side effects?
We have not had experience with this particular herbicide. I think Amy had in New Hampshire much more than we have in Maine. We have experience with other herbicides, but I, she could address questions about this one.
Hey there. Amy Smigula, Department of Environmental Services here in New Hampshire. The handout that went around included a lot of information about the herbicide itself, the application rates, as well as anything that you could expect as a result of treatment. We have used DIQUAT in New Hampshire a number of times. It used to be the go-to product for controlling aquatic plants. We've moved away from it in recent years because it's not selective, meaning that it can affect other plants in the, in the system around what we're trying to target. We typically, in New Hampshire, you've all probably heard about variable milfoil, that's the big one in New Hampshire. And DIQUAT doesn't work as great on that, so we've been using other products. However, for European NIAID, DIQUAT is the herbicide that you want to use. It's most effective on species of NIAID. So, as Norm said, you do apply it in a liquid formulation injected subsurface, and within 48 hours post-treatment, most of that herbicide is taken up by the plants in the zone of treatment. And then by 24 to 48 hours post-treatment, the herbicide is pretty much locked up either with plants or with sediment material, and there's really not much left in the water column. In terms of negative effects, you might see some impacts to non-target plant species. In other words, plants that we're not trying to control. That's pretty much it. Other than that, you might see some use restrictions, 24 hours post-treatment, or, well, the day of treatment, there's typically a swim restriction. There's usually an irrigation restriction for anywhere from three to five days. We don't really want you watering your tomato plants with an herbicide, so that is the reason for that restriction. And then, there's a restriction on drinking water use, so that you're not consuming herbicide out of the water. But of course, we recommend that you don't drink straight, straight out of the lake without treatment to begin with.
Good idea.
Some people still do that, which is amazing. Other than that, though, the toxicity is low, we treat at low doses, you're not going to see fish kills or insect kills, it doesn't bioaccumulate up the food chain, so you're not going to see impacts with the chemicals staying in fish tissue, and there is no human toxicity at the application rate that we're using. So, all in all, it seems pretty effective for what we're treating it, what we're treating with the herbicide, and toxicity is pretty good.
Where else have you used it before?
Almost every water body in New Hampshire where we've had infestations, and more than 50 water bodies across New Hampshire. It's sort of a staple product. We used it a lot in the 80s and early 90s, and then when new herbicides came online that were more target-specific for the variable milfoil, we switched to those. We use 24D more often in New Hampshire than we do any, than any other product. We have started using DIQUAT again with combination treatments. There's a new product that's been released, it's called Clipper. Flumioxazine is the, is the big name for it. But we've been combining that with DIQUAT, so Clipper DIQUAT combinations, which seem to be effective on other plant species, but it, it's really not a one-size-fits-all for herbicides. You really want to try to pick the herbicide that's going to do the most damage to the plant you want to control. So, that's why we've moved away from it for other things, but we've started using it again for combination treatments for other plants.
Any other questions? Yes, see, Hannah's going up over there.
Virginia from Milton, I have two questions. One is, since it may kill other plant species, are there, are there species of plants that are valuable food for other wildlife that we should be concerned about? And, and the second is, wait, if you have a large mass of this NIAID that dies and starts decomposing, how does that affect the water?
Yep, good question. And I actually addressed all of those in the bullet, so you can read it later. The answers to your questions now are, not all of the plants that are in the lake are going to be affected by the DIQUAT, so you're not going to see a mass die-off of aquatic plant growth in the lake. We're actually, when you look at the overall acreage of Northeast Pond, we're only treating 0.07%, so less than 1% of the overall water body, so that's really the only place that you're going to see the herbicide applied. If you look at the map that was attached to the handout that I provided, that orange strip on the eastern shoreline of Northeast Pond is the only zone where the herbicide is going to be applied. So, in terms of impact, that's really the only zone. And there wasn't a lot else in there, from what I recall, other than the NIAID?
Mostly, it's, it's European NIAID in that area. And the other thing is, there'll be a lot of water exchange with the rest of the lake. As Amy mentioned, it's a relatively small portion of the lake, so in terms of demand on the oxygen, there's a lot of water exchange. It's not as if you're treating a, a small pond in its entirety. So, we don't anticipate any big oxygen demand that would have an effect on other organisms.
And for a little bit of background, for those of you who don't know the, the decomposition oxygen chemistry, as you treat the aquatic plants, as the plants are decomposing, that takes oxygen up out of the water column. So, in that zone of treatment, you could potentially have lower oxygen for the duration of the breakdown of those plants. As John said, because it's basically an impounded river system, you have natural flow through the system anyways, that's going to combat any low oxygen that you're seeing in that zone. And again, it's a strip treatment, it's a skinny treatment along shore, it's really not going to affect a lot of herbicide, a lot of oxygen concentration. Does that answer your questions? Okay.
Ms. Brown? Thank you. So, the, the effect on other plants can be mitigated by human reintroduction of the beneficial species, I take it?
Actually, you really don't need to do a lot. We found that after the herbicide treatment, once you're removing the invasive plant, which is competing with the natives, even if you do kill the native plants during the treatment, there's a seed bank in there for those plants to regenerate, and you often don't need to intervene, nature will take its course.
The second point is, my understanding is that you would consider the Salmon Falls to be basically a meander, a moving, moving through. Do you have a, a flow rate, four miles per hour?
Oh, we looked at that, didn't we? I don't remember.
I, I don't have a flow rate, no, I don't know.
Because the question is, given a flow rate of X of the meander through the impounded waters, by the time it hits the dam, will it move off?
Yeah, it will. So, what we would do is...
If you're from Summersworth...
We did calculate that. We went through and we did the math, and I don't remember the flow volumes and the flow rates off the top of my head, but we had to do some of those exercises to get approvals from downstream water uses, and basically, there's nothing that would get through down to that point.
And then, the third question, I did not even address, is, do you consider, or has there ever been an infestation so severe that it was considered useful to drain the pond and take it back to a channelized brook to address scouring the sides of the brook?
Well, you guys do do a deep drawdown, and that didn't really take care of the issue. So, what we were seeing is that by the time we got into October and into early November, before the drawdown really exposed those areas, the plants die off naturally themselves and break down and wash away, so there's really nothing left to scour. The problem is that these plants produce a lot of seed, and it's the seed that germinates the next year, and the seed does not appear to be affected by freezing and drying. So, the seeds that are left there are the problem. If you were looking at doing a drawdown during the summer months, I think you'd have some significant arguments from recreational users. So, it's a problem.
The time, if you are going to have effective treatment of plants that are growing near shore, and you are able to expose them, you, it's done in the winter, you, you need to really dry the sediment and freeze it. So, if you have a snowy winter and it insulates the ground, it doesn't give you much. There have been studies on effective winter drawdown on a number of different species, and they're sort of across the board, because they're highly dependent on the amount of moisture in the sediment, and also on the weather that you get that particular year. But as Amy said, it's unlikely that it would be effective there. But back to the question about the downstream transport of herbicide, I mentioned our general permit for herbicide treatments in Maine. We're, if we're going to put an herbicide into a public water supply, a source, public water supply source, we are required to get a notice of written consent from that, those water treatment, water suppliers. We are putting, if, if the herbicide goes into Northeast Pond, it's about 22 river miles upstream of the Burwick and Summersworth intakes, but nonetheless, it's in their water supply. Colleagues at Maine Drinking Water Program did modeling of what you were getting at, of the herbicide concentration downstream. It is a model, but it showed that once we get down, once the water gets down to Summersworth and Burwick intakes, the concentration of the herbicide would be something 0.00, about 10 zeros, and then a number. So, it's, it's well below any detection limit, any, any test that would allow you to detect the herbicide.
Stanley had a question.
Stanley from Milton Water District. You came in and talked with the wells out, but the Milton Water District is, it's nice to hear about Summersworth and other people, but I, we have five wells, and four of them are on Rocky Point, which is right off of Milton Pond, so that's before the dam. Has that been taken into consideration? Because there is a good chance that that treatment, which I'm all for, is going to be in our tanks.
A couple of things. One is that during the permitting process, all wells will have to be identified, and that's the same for Maine, correct? So, they would need to be identified, and risk would need to be factored in. A really good thing about DIQUAT is that it is not mobile in groundwater sources, it's going to bind very quickly with any particles that are in the water column and with soils on the, the lake bed. So, I mean, those of you that are on the pond know that there's sort of a tanic color, or a tea color to Northeast Pond, that's a lot of organics up in the water column, so the DIQUAT's quickly going to bind with that. And the half-life for DIQUAT in the water column is 12 to 24 hours, plus with that binding, we haven't seen any groundwater contamination or well contamination as a result.
Because that well is not fed by the lake.
Yep, so it's direct hydrologic.
Yeah, so basically, the ground filters the water. The only thing we, we put in our water is soda ash, pH, that's it. And if there's anything else that needs to be done, we need to know prior to anything happening.
Yep, we'll evaluate that as part of the process, and like I said, it's very unlikely that it's going to show up in the drinking water.
Because we don't have that ability, you know, to do that, so...
Yep, so we'll look into that as a, as a factor. Do you have business cards, so we can get in touch with you for...
I don't have one on me, but I can...
Okay. Can I just have you write your name and your contact info?
Question, timeframe of when you may be doing this, and would it affect the summer camp?
The timeframe, you have to have actively growing plants when you apply it, and we did, we came every couple of weeks to the pond this year diving, because there's complication, well, just in terms of knowing when the plant is up, because there are two other species that are very closely related, and they look similar until the, until the European NIAID gets pretty good size. We found that about the third week in July, we were really easy, it was very easy to discern the difference. So, I, I would think maybe mid, mid-July's timeframe, sometime like that. And what would you...
Would that affect the summer camp over at Town Beach and townhouse?
Right, so that's on the, the treatment would be on the other, so I know, granted, it's a narrow, narrow water body, but it would be on the other side of the water body from, from there.
Yeah, the Town Beach is on Townhouse Pond and...
Oh, on Townhouse Pond, yeah, we're on Northeast. It's just that, that shaded orange area that we're looking at this year.
And in terms of impact to the, to children's camp or anybody who's swimming in the lake, like I said, I don't know what Maine is going to do, but on the New Hampshire side of the border, we would typically put a 24-hour swim restriction. Other than that, there's nothing on the label that says that a swim restriction is a requirement, so there should be no impact to the camp.
And we, we, part of the swim restriction, we recommend also, is also strictly from a safety standpoint, not from the herbicide per se, but if the, the crew that's out doing the work... the work, so they, there's no accidents that may happen, or anything like that, there's no opportunity for that to happen.
Right. But I'm also looking, then we go over here, or somewhere else, while we're on the other side, so I see a huge impact, just curious. Anyone else, I'm sorry, Virginia?
Virginia, Milton. This may be jumping ahead to what Norm or somebody was going to say, but is there going to be more monitoring to find out if there's more places where there's dense growth? I mean, since it produces seeds, and there was a lot last year, I assume there are going to be seeds dispersed throughout the system, so we may get more large areas of it. And I take it that you wouldn't be treating any other areas with herbicide this year, but if you found some, maybe next year, is that-
Well, we have a number of volunteers. We call them volunteer invasive plant surveyors, who were trained to look for these things. And so we intend to have them do surveys in the early summer. We hope to be able to get every shoreline looked at, all the way from the entrance of the Salmon Falls and Brad Rivers down to the dam. Also, I'm sure that New Hampshire DEs and Maine DEP will also be doing some surveying incidental to directing the contractors, as to where to go to do the dyeing, where to go to apply the herbicides.
And I'm sure PPA would welcome any additional interested surveyors, because it always helps to have more eyes out there. This infestation was found by a man named Dennis Robers, who was on Mouson Lake in Maine, and he snorkels, he snorkelled last year, in 2015, about 40 lakes. And one morning he woke up, and he said, "I'm going to go here," and he went to Northeast Pond, and he snorkelled looking for invasive plants, and he also knows other aquatic plants, and he found this plant. And that's what started this whole thing. Plus, we have Lori Callahan, who leads what's called the York County Invasive Aquatic Plant Program, and she has motivated some of her volunteers to be out there surveying, but we can always use more. And Virginia, if you look at the map, the yellow dots are the ones that are new in 2016, so yes, it has been moving downstream. We hope that we will not have to herbicide any other area, that it would just be this area of the dense growth, and that the other areas would be managed mechanically with removal. So the removal that Norm described, it's going to happen again this year. It's not, this is not exclusively an herbicide program. All these programs are integrated programs. It involves monitoring for plant populations, monitoring other areas that have been surveyed, we haven't found them yet, but resurveying, and will involve removal by hand. It could involve the use of blankets, which are put down maybe for a two-month period on the bottom to smother the plants. If it's a small tax that's very dense, you might use that, we call them ventic barriers, and possibly herbicide treatment. So it's pretty much an integrated approach.
I would just add to that, that last year, we surveyed the entire Townhouse Pond again, found them. We surveyed where the Townhouse Pond becomes Depot Pond, along the highway, also on St. James Avenue, along the way Rocky Point. Didn't really find anything there. We found a few little patches around Rocky Point. Surveyed Depot Pond on Lebanon Side, from, well, from, we would say where the no-wake zone ends, after the river. All along Lebanon Side, we didn't find, and that's where all the little yellow dots are on this map, if you have it. And the fellow who did the surveying there also did a lot of removal last year, and that was the same man who found it in the first place, this Dennis Robers. We were grateful to have his services, we hired his services last year. He did all of this surveying, he really is worth, worth a lot of money for, you know, for what he does. He knows what he's doing, he removed a lot of plant by himself. He went all the way to the dam.
Royce Heath from Lebanon. John, I've got a question for you that comes up to me. We're talking about that west shore, east shore over in Lebanon, the syrup, the spot where you guys are pretending to treat.
I've had questions from some of the citizens over there about how well are they going to be warned about this, and what's going to happen to them right at the time that this treatment happens?
When we've done herbicide treatments in the past, we have notified, we've certainly notified everybody, all property owners on the adjacent shoreline, for sure, certainly, and we have to post that this treatment is occurring.
Okay.
And also-
What do you do? You tell them a few days ahead of time? Is it like posted anywhere?
It would be posted at public access points. Certainly, we'd post one at Everett's Landing also, but we would also notify-
Soul Shores Road in that area?
Yes, and we would directly notify the property owners on that shoreline also, by mail.
Okay.
We're not, you know, if we're treating in this area, I'd have to look back at what our permit says. We're not going to notify by mail everybody on-
No, no.
Milton Pond's, but certainly the property owners in that area.
Especially those folks with wells, that are using the wells for drinking water.
Yeah, okay.
As John was talking a minute ago, I think I missed answering one of the earlier questions about diquat and treating the niad. The effectiveness of the treatment is very good if you do apply it in July. They've seen very good success with eliminating the population of plants over the course of the treatment. However, the seed bank is still left in there, the herbicide does not affect the seeds, so we may need to treat again in future years. I'm trying to tie a few questions together. We may need to treat again in future years as that seed bank plays itself out, which could be, I think, five, six, or seven years down the road, but you wouldn't necessarily have to treat 40 acres. Our hope is, our hope was last year to do the treatment last year, so that in 2016, so that we didn't have continued expansion, but now we may have to do a little bit of damage control with additional treatment areas, so that we can catch up with some of the infestations. But it is effective.
Yes, Norm? I have a question of you folks. Do you have any idea how much it's going to cost to do the treatments and the diver-assisted suction harvesting? I see you spent $30,000.
Right, and, well, we have a bid for the treatment this year, and I actually haven't looked at it, that was $15,000, but did that include the permitting too?
It does.
It does, so, and we have a bid from the herbicide applicator who would do this, which is $15,000, but it includes the permitting process. But in Maine, DEP is the, DEP or an agent we appoint is the only applicant that could apply herbicide, can apply for a permit. We will apply for the permit, so that cost is not going to be, so I don't know what, let's just say between $10,000 and $15,000 for the herbicide treatment. And then, then the question would be, well, how much diver-assisted suction harvest work do you need? How much of the mechanical control do you need? And none of us knows that. I've been telling Dwayne Sylvester of the Association about that a little bit, Amy and I spoke a little bit. Last year, we had six weeks of diver-assisted suction harvester. And if that 40-acre area that they worked is treated with herbicide, that take goes out of the picture for mechanical control. So then we're looking at whatever else is going on. And I don't know what that would take, but my guess is, if you budgeted for four weeks of diver-assisted suction harvest, that may get us quite a ways. Will it get us everything? I don't know.
I made a wild guess at it some time ago.
What was your wild guess?
And I've given these folks the best number. I told them it's my estimate, based on your boss last year. I estimate that, do a good job of treating it next year in 2017, this year, that we're looking at a $40,000 program. Approximately, I thought probably around $10,000 would be for the herbicides, and another 30 for, see, I want to attack all of the lake. I don't want to, I don't want to just go on one small pot. I want to get everything out that we can get out with these divers. And so I had thrown that number up. Now, I had, just for planning purposes, and for where's the money going to come from? TPPA is around, and we're very much interested in helping with getting this, getting at this weed and preserving the lake. I mean, we have some funds, we have been setting funds aside for 15 years in anticipation that we may have to someday attack invasive plants. We have enough funds that we could probably handle 2017, you know? I say that with some hesitation, because I don't want you all to think that that's going to solve the problem. We don't have to worry about getting any other funds, because TPPA is going to come. We think it would be wiser to use less of our funds, use it for unanticipated contingencies, but we have a long-term program. TP, you can count on TPPA. TPPA, by the way, is just 150 families, you know, who contribute anywhere from $25 to $100 a year. So we don't make that much money, but we could probably, on the basis of our income and our other expenses, you could probably count on TPPA for something like $6,000, $7,000 a year, every year, you know, assuming that. And grants is another source. We've applied to both, we've applied to New Hampshire, and we will be applying to Maine when they come out with their request for proposal for grant funding. We have no idea what kind of money we're going to be able to get from the state. But, I mean, if you assume, I don't know, $5,000, $6,000 from TPPA, that's $11,000, and the cost is $40,000, still left with $29,000, and have to get from someplace else. You're not going to get that by selling popcorn. It's going to mean, you know, it's going to mean, it's going to mean that the towns are going to have to appropriate some funds. Now, when you look at that, $29,000, that's a big number, you know, it's a lot of money to come up with, but if you look at the loss of revenues from a loss of property taxes, if you want to come up with $29,000 of town funds, split up appropriately between Lebanon and Milton, to save, you know, a loss of property tax revenues of any order of $300,000, probably that's a good investment, because you're going to lose a lot of revenues if this is not controlled. The good news is it's controllable. $29,000 is not a substantial amount of money, but it's not, you know, it's not insurmountable. So what we need from the towns, from you, is your support, a declaration of support, and ask the townspeople to appropriate funds, signed in 2017.
Okay, go ahead. I think Andy was just going to mention that we already have an article to raise appropriate monies for this.
Very well.
Second-
And I would like just to say, like, you know, like Norm was saying, you know, this doesn't just affect the people around the lake. And when the town people of Milton come to the ballot in March, it'd be very wise for them to, it's Article Number 16, is to vote yes. $5,000, we're going to start somewhere, but this doesn't affect people around the lake. This affects the whole town of Milton.
And not only just the year-round residents, but also our summer residents, including Joyoull Beach. So, also, second, I didn't know if anybody, if you had addressed a little piece of this, this lake right up here, right here, when I gather, there's a nice beach over here, belongs to Akin. Has anybody approached Akin? There, I mean, there, right on this lake.
That's the way up north of the entrance to the Northeast Pond?
Yep. Has it been checked?
All surveys that have been done there have not found any niad there.
Nothing, huh? Okay.
And I think that Lori Callahan did go up in there. I'm not sure if she went as far up as you pointed out.
Right, she did.
She did.
And what's the difference between a permit by intent and a permit by rule? Is it over the water and the permit by rule is on the land?
Permit by rule may, no, the notice of intent is under waste discharge law, as opposed to, when you're talking about permit by rule, that's the Natural Resources Protection Act, so any, right? Yeah, I can see from your shirt that you might know about that. So, so the notice of intent is under a general permit, which is under, again, the Maine Waste Discharge Law. So it's, you know, we could have applied for an individual permit to treat herbicides, but what we've done is developed a general permit, which allows a more rapid permit process and rapid response to new infestations. So it's under waste discharge law, the Maine Waste Discharge Law, as opposed to Natural Resources Protection Act.
Thank you. John, you mentioned the mats. So, Amy?
Yes.
And under RSA 541, are you familiar with that?
Off the top of my head, no.
RSA, no chemicals including pesticides or herbicides by any kind, shall be applied to ground turf, and what we're looking at is established vegetation, except if applied by or cultural, yes, thank you, professionals, that's what we're working with, right?
Right. So the, in New Hampshire, we deal with Chapter 16, I'm sorry, Chapter 600 rules. So there are administrative rules that outline the process relative to special aquatic permits.
Right.
So those provide all the guidelines and requirements for a special aquatic permit to be issued, and it is a requirement that a licensed aquatic herbicide applicator be hired, exactly, to be hired to do the work. And Solo Two Lake Management is the only company in this region that is licensed and qualified to work in surface waters. So they are the company that provided the bid, and they're the company that would be doing the treatment. About two weeks ago, John and I just happened to be at a regional meeting where they earn their research application credits, and we've also, both of us have been working with this company for a number of years, managing lakes and ponds throughout the area, and I'd say that they're more than qualified. So they definitely have earned our trust, and their safety record is second to none.
And their availability is right around the time when we need them, right on the mid-July time?
Yes, this is already on their radar. So they've already proposed their schedule for 2017, and they know that we're looking at roughly the June timeframe. I'm not sure how it works in Maine, but we typically in New Hampshire have to specify a treatment date, and then we have a window of 14 days after that date in which we can wait if we have to shift the treatment date. So we have a little bit of wiggle room if the plants are a little slow to come up, or if water levels are high and flows are high, so that we can dial in the right amount of time for treatment. Is that the same in Maine?
We don't have to indicate a date.
Even better.
We could, we have, I mean, in terms of our permit, but in terms of public notification and communication, clearly, we do that, but in the permit, we don't have to indicate a date.
Even better.
We say approximately this time, but we're not really bound to that.
You said?
Not yet.
Okay, go ahead.
One last thing. I know that we've already done small measures of combating this, and thanks to, the equipment is actually offered by TPPA for the boat. Can you speak about that? Where they treat the boats before going in, or treat the boats coming out?
Yeah, well, Karen Brown and I have talked about, because I'm on the REC Committee, I'm on the commission, and we are going to get together with Everco's mariner, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to have a little bit better boat wash this year, and we're also going to, you know, we're looking at maybe charging, you know, a few bucks, you know, more to launch a boat. You know, we'll see how it goes, but we are working on that to help with, you know, the cost of this.
I have a question of John, you had mentioned the mats to smother them. What's the success of that? Does that kill the seeds? And that seems to me that'd be quite a bit less costly, if it's effective.
Amy, I think, alluded to the fact that we don't really know how long the seeds will lie dormant in the bottom without, you know, if you put a blanket on the mat on the bottom of them, and then you take it off after three years, where you still may have viable seeds, we don't know how many years they will be viable. It, one of the things about using a mat is that it not only kills the plant you're trying to kill, but it includes, it kills any other plant there. You do it, if you do it, if we, when we do it, we do it in areas that are a monoculture of that particular plant, and we usually leave it down for a couple of months, in certain instances, leave it down longer, and then move it to a new location. It's actually very labor-intensive, and actually quite expensive to do. If you were to treat an acre, if you were to mat an acre, and you hired a contractor to do it, so an acre is about 43,000 square feet- so an acre is about forty-three thousand square feet, you figure with the material costs, the labor costs, you're figuring upwards of a buck a square foot.
It's more than that nowadays.
Is it more than that? So you're talking more than forty thousand dollars for an acre.
Okay, never mind.
For reference, the herbicide cost for the diquat is about three hundred and fifty or four hundred dollars per acre, for comparison sake.
But there are some instances where we may use them, really site-specific instances.
One, yeah, two things about Myrick Millen. One is that Jeff Everett made a verbal commitment to add five dollars if Milton did the town of Milton, and that he would totally donate to the cause, that five, that extra five dollars if Milton did the same. The other thing is, I'd like to hear from the Lebanon group as to what, I haven't heard what recent positions they have on this.
Christine, town of Lebanon, we've had many discussions. John's come out several times, you've come out several times, John's come out several times, we've talked about the NIAID, gone back and forth. We have a problem because we had what we assumed was a vote that we couldn't use herbicide because we have the no spray. But we went to lawyers and they reviewed all that, as you said. Now we found that we can use that. I think we're all on board as far as putting something on our ballot. We're just not sure how much to put on our ballot. We haven't really sat down, talked about the figure too much. We did, we do have some estimates that was given to us from impact. So that's our next step. We're working on our ballots now, so that'll be our next step doing that. But we're on board to try to get a grip of this because it is our tax dollars, it's our revenue, it's our citizens, it's our, we have a tremendous amount of houses on the water, so we want to do something about it. And how, we know it's going to be a continuing fight. Whether we start most of it this year, we're going to have to continue to keep rolling something in there, maybe making something that rolls over each year and keeps funding if we don't use it, stays in that spot. I'm not sure if that's something that we have to discuss in a meeting. But, yeah, we do plan to move further and get something, so we can have someone set aside to help with this.
Great, awesome.
All right, Deb Wilson from Lebanon. So when John had originally had come and spoke at the selectmen's meeting, I know, John, you were originally, you were looking for like a three-year commitment. And I'm concerned I'm not hearing anybody speak about that because you said it won't happen overnight. And I know when you had come, and we have, you know, the video that I did review, and you were looking for like a three-year commitment. And I'm concerned because I'm hearing a warrant article in Milton for five thousand, which isn't, it's like about a quarter or less of what we need for one year. We're not getting any numbers out of Lebanon yet because our town meeting isn't until May. But I'm concerned that nobody's talking about that three-year commitment. So what happens if we commit for one year and then the following year we don't commit again? And we wind up with all of the, you know, all of that growing again?
Deb, I, you can play the tape for me. I don't remember the three-year period. What's most important for us, and I'm sure for Amy too, is that we have a working relationship between the state, between, and the town. And ideally here, it is a great situation, you have a very strong, active, established lake association. And I think everybody realizes that this is not a one-year, two-year, three-years, it's not even a three-year. It's a, this is something we're going to deal with going forward. And, and I'm really glad to be here having this discussion and being able to participate because we know that the towns are committed and the association committed, and it's certainly, I'll speak for New Hampshire, where both state agencies are committed. And I think we'll do good things moving forward.
I can't speak for the entire town of Lebanon, but I can say that, you know, based on the importance of the lake to the town of Lebanon, and I'm sure to the town of Lebanon as well, that commitment goes well beyond the three years. I mean, I believe this board is committed to whatever it takes.
We have to start some.
Right. No, no, I understand that. I just.
We didn't know how much money to set aside, so we started off with five thousand. I mean, that warrant article will probably be, you know, on every ballot, you know, until, you know, for not, we don't know how long. But we're not going away. I mean, we're going to take care of this. I mean, this is.
Right, I just kind of wanted to make sure that it was understood that it's not like one time, five thousand. It's continuing at least five thousand.
We understood this a while ago. I think we've had this in the meeting, we've said the words. We know that we are going to combat this head-on, okay? And that it wasn't going to go away. So we use the word maintenance. We are going to have to have a maintenance program to keep on top of this for as long as there's water in that lake.
Right, if I could just ask one more, too, is that you guys have discussed this obviously at much greater length in Milton than we have in Lebanon. So it's refreshing for me to hear that you guys have this commitment. And because I'm videoing for Lebanon, I had to ask because I don't, I don't think it's been discussed at that greater length in Lebanon about a continuing commitment. So I just want to, that's why I made it clear, not picking on you guys or picking on our board of selectmen. I just wanted to make it clear that it is a continued commitment. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing, too.
Mary Lee, I live on Susho's Road. I am the only person here from Lebanon that lives on the waterfront, okay? Most of the people in town know nothing about the NIAID. They took some paperwork via last elections. That's all they know. Most of the people don't know about the problem at all. So when this goes up for a vote, most of the people are going to turn it down.
Hey, Christine, I'm on board right now, I was thinking about doing a flyer. Couldn't that be added in for the flyer? So that, this is a town-wide flyer that's going to go out, so that would kind of.
How's it go out?
By mail.
By mail.
You have to get them to do that.
They're going to do that. They've agreed to do that. I mean.
I haven't heard that.
Taxpayers.
None of us have heard that. They have agreed to, I had to pass them out at the elections, by hand.
Thank you for doing that.
They haven't committed to bailing anything out.
It's going to take a joint effort by everybody, everybody.
I know that.
Educating, you know, the taxpayers.
So how do, how do we do that?
Well, I'm sure you have, I'm sure you have a website. Do you have a website in Lebanon? I mean, I'm sure you're not.
We have a steering committee for this. It's me.
Would you have a website though?
You're not alone.
I'm in town of Lebanon.
I'm not alone. I feel.
No, I'm on it too. I'm on the committee.
Right, but you're not in Lebanon. I'm the only person here from Lebanon on the water.
No, I understand, but don't you have a website in Lebanon?
She has no spot on the website.
Then that would be a huge resource, would be your website, you know, I'm sure. We were just talking about joint forces, so why don't you two hook up? And there's your steering committee. It doesn't have to be Lebanon, Milton, it's a steering committee.
I'd like to see us work together because we can't get anybody else from Lebanon. But putting something on the website for the town of Lebanon, we don't even get our minutes from our selectmen meetings posted on the internet. I don't see how they're going to let somebody else post something on the internet.
It sounds like they're on board here.
Amy had a question a while back there.
Actually, I have two, I'm going to link together two things.
Okay.
One is that the handout that I have tonight is electronically available in a PDF that you can use to spread around, either by any email chains that you have or posting to the town's website. So that has a good summary of what's going on and what we're proposing. I can include costs on that before it's finalized and send it out to you guys for distribution. So that can be already almost a finished piece of educational information.
But it doesn't work because of the eighty-seven homes on my road, only seven of them vote. They're all summer people. So they're the ones that are interested, but they can't vote.
Okay.
They cannot vote. So the only one that's voting is a handful of people.
Well, it's during the summertime that they're going to be doing this process anyway. So just before the middle of July, then most of the people are up here, right?
Right.
I mean, you've got to do the best you can. I mean, I have all the answers.
Like, no, I, I think two are the best ideas, okay? But I'd like to see all these selected in Lebanon aboard, not just two of them. I would like to see all three of them.
Should we just move on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amy.
And the other item is, in terms of cost, I manage eighty-five water bodies with invasives in New Hampshire. And the trend for all of those is that the first couple of years, the cost is more because you're attacking a bigger issue. And then as you taper off in years three, four, five, and we usually look five years out, your costs become more of a maintenance mode. So as Norm was talking about, they have money at a maintenance level of six thousand, seven thousand dollars a year. But you will see the first couple of years will be the most expensive. And understanding that, if you guys do, like you said, do a non-lapsing or continuously appropriated fund, that would go a long way at rolling any money forward that you don't spend so that it carries it out a little further. That's just what I see with the towns that I work with across New Hampshire.
Mr. Brown.
Oh, thank you. Larry Brown. On the, the cost for treating, using the mats seemed quite high. A couple of things came to mind. Fish weers, which direct fish in a particular pattern, nets which are angled so the V is pointing downstream to catch seed. Is that viable? And then lastly, on downstream, once you get past the dam, is the seed viable in running water of the salmon falls itself? Will it last to get down as far as summer's worth? And then the other thing, just either New Hampshire or Maine, every time I go into Maine, I see, wash your boat. We are trying to improve our boat washing station. Do you have criteria so that the wash water doesn't trickle its way back into the lake? Ten thirty seconds, anyone you want.
Your comment about the bottom barriers being expensive, I agree with that. And that is a cost that if you hire a contractor, such as the one we hire to do the herbicide treatment, that's the contractor rate. In Maine, many, many of the lake groups, we have twenty or so infested, well, no, never mind. We have about forty, we have twenty-three infested systems, maybe forty-five to fifty infested water bodies in those systems. And a number of those groups are using these bottom barriers, but they are building them themselves and installing them themselves and doing all of the work with some help from us in terms of grant money. So it's not costing them a dollar a square foot, but that's the commercial, commercial rate. We have used screens in some instances at the, if you have a pond that drains into another pond through a wetland with a sinuous path, open water path, we have used baffled screens in some instances that have caught some fragments. Doesn't necessarily mean it catches all of them. We've also used for catching the raging water mill foil, a net that across the, above a dam that has to be cleaned off. So there are possibilities. I haven't looked closely at the Milton Dam. Anytime you put something up there like that, though, it requires cleaning, it risks clogging, all those types of things.
And the seeds are so small.
These seeds, Amy just said that the seeds are so small. These seeds are really small. They're elongate, but they're really small. Could seeds get downstream? Yes, they have. The plant showed up in, we found it in Spalding Pond last year. So what, a couple miles downstream, mile and a half downstream? I don't, and we need to do more surveying downstream of Spalding to see if it's moving beyond Spalding. Wash stations in Maine, we have a few wash stations. We have, we have a handbook that was put together for how to install a wash station. Certainly where the wastewater goes is critical in a wash station. I don't know what's your situation, if you actually have one. When I started working on this sixteen years ago about, people said, oh, I need a wash station. People calling me from all over the Willie Wax in Maine, oh, we need to build a wash station. And I said, you don't need to build a wash station out in wherever you are because they said we don't have the money for it. I said, what you need to do is to do careful, comprehensive cleaning of the boat and remove any material find. Now, this one, though, is a little tricky because the seeds are so small. So if you have a wash station, that's a good thing. But as you point out, it can't wash back into the water. I don't know what you have the guidelines on wash stations.
We have some basic guidelines, but there are lots of new guidelines that are out there that deal with what I call the noseams, like the tiny little seeds or the microscopic animals that are now moving around our region. So I'm sure I can compile some guidance for you. If you have an engineer on the town level that can do some evaluations of slip of land to tell you drainage, that would be helpful, just a quick survey of the site to try to identify a location where drainage is away from the lake and being collected either in a catch basin or going into a swale of some type so that you're not draining right into the lake. But I can put some material together for you.
Well, Karen and I have talked about this at, at Marv's. They, we wanted it up. What we have now is a wash station that is above the wash house, which is about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy feet from the water line. And it's two-tiered, and it's a sandy soil, so anything that goes in, even microscopic, it's going to go into the sandy area and highly unlikely at the moment to, there's no direct access in, back into the lake, and that's where the wash station is. We just hope to get some signage up that we haven't put in yet. And that was my responsibility, and I will take responsibility for getting that in. But it is there, and I think it's a good situation.
No, I think it's a really great meeting tonight. I think we've actually accomplished a lot tonight. I want to thank the Lebanon Board of Selectmen for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
And thank the states, both New Hampshire and Maine. TPA.
He'd like to thank you too, and all of you. Thank you for all working here.
I'm not getting you over your head. You don't.
You were the one.
Oh, I got plenty of you. Thank you very much. You're fine.